This conference will now be recorded.
Ready.
It's six o'clock. Today is Thursday, May 25th, 2023. And we do have a quorum. We'll call this meeting of the Rome City Council into order. And we're going to start out with our invocation. Pastor Van Zant, please.
Close your eyes. Dear and the Father, I thank you for this day and I thank you for everything that you bless us with, Lord. I thank you for the rain that we've had recently. And I pray that you'll please us keep our first responders safe. And I pray that you'll please us bring them home to their loved ones. I pray that you put a hedge protection around them. Certainly thankful for the government that we have here in this city. And I pray that you'll please us be with our elected officials. This is a very important time of our city's tenure. And I pray that you'll please us continue to just give them divine guidance. And I pray that you'll please us allow them to just make the right decisions that are apropos for our patrons that are here in the city of Rome. And I pray that you'll please us allow us to be the best law-abiding citizens that we can be. And I pray that you'll please us continue to be with our mayor and our city administrator as they look forward to the future, Lord. I'm thankful for just everything you bless us with. And then we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Actually, if we can, I'd kind of like to get an explanation on number three, too. We'll just pull those off. Okay, very good. Very good. Public comments. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on the future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the citysecretary@citysecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a friend, family member, or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individuals shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. And Ms. Shana, what do you have?
Our only speaker tonight is Deborah B. Kraft regarding item number one.
I'm Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. On the agenda under item one, regular business, is ordinances. And looking through the packet that was online, there seems to be that state law has been struck out to be removed. I think it's 22042. And I know the council, this is brought to the council for their approval. So I really hope the council will consider this and think about it because you're allowed to make ordinances as long as they don't undo the state laws. So you might really want to read through what's being changed. It seems like it's giving one person a lot of power. Y'all were elected to represent this, not elected to hand your power over to an individual because then it becomes a dictatorship with no oversight, no checks and balances. So I really, really hope that y'all reconsider passing that the way it's written. Make changes to it if you want to, but don't try to surpass state law. State law is what it is. And don't give all your power up. That's not what you were elected to do. If y'all are going to give all your power away, then we don't need a council. Thank you.
Announcements. City council meeting, June the 8th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Also, the Rome veterans will have the Memorial Day tribute, May 27th, this Saturday, at the Veterans Memorial Park at 11:00 AM. Any other announcements from council?
The Rome Library is going to have a 63rd anniversary celebration on August 5th. And so I just wanted to point that out. I'll remind folks later. Have a lot of fun activities planned. Hopefully raise some money for operations.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Okay, let's go on to consent agenda. The council has no objection. I've already talked to the city administrator about items number two and number three under consent agenda to move them to regular agenda. And so we'll just need the consent on the minutes of city council regular session dated May 17. What are we doing?
Mayor has made a request to move number two and three to the regular agenda for conversation. So the only thing left on consent would be approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. And so since we're going to move these to the regular agenda, renewal of contract with Rise Broadband. I'll be the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that I have been in conversation with our city attorney about. We do have an opportunity to renew a lease. There is a company that leases four spots for four antenna and four radio repeaters as it relates to internet service in this area. It's not unusual for cities to lease out that space. However, the previous contract has expired. And our attorney has a, what would you call it, Carvin? A standardized contract that he would like to see us use that protects some of our own interests for the city of Rome. So what I'd be looking for this evening, if council wants to renew that contract, is the ability to negotiate with Rise Broadband for a monthly fee anywhere from $250 to $300, as well as have that reviewed by the attorney once we get those final changes to the contract to his approval.
Is that just information?
I'm looking for direction from council.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on it?
Now, Partnership Wireless was purchased by Rise Broadband.
I don't know that answer.
Because originally this says Partnership Wireless.
It's possible.
So do we know the financial condition of Rise Broadband?
I do not.
Or what they charge going into our homes? That seems a little low.
I've been told the standard is about $275 a month from other cities. I agree with you. It is a little low, given what they charge for their service. But I'm not sure that there's not some industry standard out there from talking to Mr. Carvin's office.
So you just need to make a motion to enter into negotiations. I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then number three, approval of mitigation rates for 2023. That will be by our chief assist.
The mitigation rates are being raised mainly for just inflation. Did some research on it. And ordinance 2004-02, back, that'd be in February of 2004, that's when the city adopted this code to charge fees for people that is not within the city limits. We do not charge for structure fires, our medicals. It's just REX and everything that comes with that, which means hazmat cleanup, extrication. That's what we charge for. And mainly it goes through the insurance company. And I looked at it today, and from the last time I got raised back in '22, there's like a $30 difference in each rate. Mainly just goes right through the insurance company. And they hit deals. Now, if it's turned in late, we have a year to turn in that, you know, to turn it into cost recovery. So if we don't get it in early enough, we try to get it in within a month. If the people already get paid, you know, through their insurance company, and then sometimes they'll call the individual themselves. But we had a problem just a while back with a citizen here. They contacted me. I contacted them. I told them do not charge citizens within the city limits alone. So they said that would be fine, and they took care of it. Any questions?
These are all based on the new amounts that you, that you're going to charge?
Yes.
Is there any way that you, do you have anything that shows what, you know, what the increase is? What it was before?
That was about $30 per.
On every item?
Pretty much every item, about $30.
Do we have some kind of document that shows that?
Yeah, I mean, I've got it.
Okay. All right.
Chief Assistant, what, what systems are you using to track these charges?
They do it with cost recovery. They'll send us an item. I was dealing with something on a computer.
So they maintain the price list, not?
Right, right. It's theirs. We're not, we're not, we're not doing it ourselves. We could refuse to do it, but with inflation. And I don't know if anybody realized this, but the fire department's not 100% funded by city taxes. So that's why we have to do cost recovery to get some of our stuff back. Like, we break a piece of equipment, we use a hazmat, something to replace it. That's what, that's what helps us pay for it.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I make a motion to accept the fee update for the cost recovery.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, let's move on. Regular agenda. Number one, the ordinance 2023-02, updating staff roles and responsibilities. I did ask for this to be brought back to council. And hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the ordinance itself. It does involve, I believe, about five ordinances that were already in place. And those ordinances, they do, I'm going to assume that these were done in 2018. I believe that was under your watch, Mr. Atkins. Okay, and so they do reference state code under the type A general law city. And, but I noticed that with some of these, they've been marked out. Overall, it appears that references to city council or mayor have been essentially deleted off of here. And so that leads me with concerns about not only the mayor's responsibility for oversight, but also council's responsibility. And that's where we are. I'd like to see some, I'd like to hear some discussion. It just kind of just whipped right through us. And I'd like to hear some discussion about it, from the council.
I believe that we, as the council, make the laws and the rules. And the city administrator is the one that carries those out. We also have checks and balances for all of the things that the city administrator does. And I need to find out if we are violating state law since it was said during the public comments.
I can go ahead and address that. No, I have reviewed the ordinance and I've reviewed the amendments to the ordinance, and they do not violate state law. And I would just, I would just add, even if we attempted to, we can't preempt state law anyway. So the chapter that's referenced, 22042, controls. But nothing that, that we did or nothing that was done in the proposed amendments takes away from the authority granted by section 22.046. It's fine as drafted. It's just a matter of preference.
Yeah, because to me, this, we're just kind of updating a lot of verbiage on this, but more importantly, it establishes more of a chain of command.
So then what, what is the responsibility of the mayor? Because the mayor, I mean, by state statute, the mayor oversees the operation of the city.
Unless there's a city administrator that, that does that correct?
But state law doesn't make provisions for a city administrator.
Well, the city mayor will still have all the duties and responsibilities you have. This does not take away any of your responsibilities. I mean, it designates the city administrator as the one primarily responsible. You still have the right to go and inspect things, too.
Because, you know, when you, given onto it, it sounds more like, and I, I do see it from time to time interchange between city administrator and city manager. And the city manager is not under, doesn't fall under the general law type A city.
That is, that is correct. The city of Rome has a contractual relationship with a city administrator. And that contract is with the governing body, the city council. And they have, through their contractual relationship, the oversight responsibility of the city administrator's duties.
One of the things, whenever I was asked to speak upon appointment, we talked about trust. And I think it's important, as a council, that we listen and we hear what the people who have gone to school for this, who know how to run a city, who have those directions. So we're always looking to the city administrator and the city attorney for that, those directions. It's our responsibility as a council, then, to make decisions based on their guidance and represent the voice of the people in the city, along with the mayor. So I am in agreement.
It's an issue of continuity where the city employees, I mean, we get replaced every two years.
In the question from the city sector, could you turn your mic on so that they can?
It is on. I should clear it out myself. It's a question of continuity for me because we're elected for two-year terms. And the employees, I believe, deserve that continuity instead of having a new manager every two years. That's the way I see it. I also see where, on the section 106002 subsection C, disciplinary action by mayor, the mayor shall inspect the conduct of city officers as designated. So I see that you still have the authority to do that based on this. And I just view it more of a management issue. And that comes from my experience of having to work with two bosses multiple occasions in my career. That can create conflict. And I almost wonder if some of that conflict has been created in the past in this town by that situation. I don't know. I'm just speculating. So that's my comment.
Mr. Johnson? All right, I think you get a roll call vote on this one.
That is correct. I just, for the record, this is a roll call vote, and it does require a majority of the council to override the mayor's decision.
Do we need another motion for this?
Yes, if someone would go ahead and make a motion expressing their.
I move that we approve the ordinance. Sorry, let me find it. I move that we approve ordinance update 2023-02.
I'll second.
Oh, you got to get a roll call. Johnson?
Am I just approving this or denying it?
Whichever you choose, yes. Take sustain out of there.
I'm still confused on this. Being new to all this, I'm not sure what exactly what you're looking.
Yeah, just to be clear, this ordinance was approved at the last council meeting. The mayor, under our ordinances, has the right to veto any ordinance approved by the council. Under our ordinance, it has to come immediately back to the council at the next meeting. And then the council votes to either sustain or override the mayor's veto. So to override the mayor's veto takes a simple majority, three votes out of five. The motion, as I understand it on the floor, was to override the mayor's veto. So a yes, the ordinance would stay adopted as originally adopted. A no would sustain the veto and the ordinance would not pass.
Well, I'm going to go with no, but still thinking we'd get that voted on.
Aye.
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 King?
Aye.
She make?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, Wise County Sheriff Dispatch Fee and Commissioners Court Meeting Update.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has been on our agenda multiple times. But as part of the education of the new council members, as some of you are coming into this, after we've already had some discussions, I'd like to, from time to time, put it on the agenda so that you all can receive an update, excuse me, on the progress that's been made. Since the last time we presented this to you, we have attended various meetings, but the most important one came last Monday from the Commissioners Court. Both Mayor Mitchell and myself were there, along with Mrs. Mize, and heard the folks speak that were from the Regional Mayor's Group on behalf of some of the feedback that they've heard from their council members and from our council members. So Mr. Brian Dolan from Aurora spoke, and Mr. Rodney Holmes from Boyd spoke. You may or may not have seen the article that was in the paper as of today. It did a good job of covering the information. At this point, both those individuals stood up and they spoke about the fact that we, at least the council of the past, had not been in favor of paying the $65,000 fee that the sheriff's office would like to impose on us for dispatch services. They did a very good job of discussing the reasons why and the fact that, it's not that we argue that the sheriff needs the money. It's the fact that the funding source that he's looking for, we do not believe is equitable or appropriate at this time. The sheriff did also speak on behalf of his position. And it's my understanding that that will come back over the next couple of months to the Commissioners Courts in one-on-one meetings with the sheriff and others, with the auditor and the county judge. And then in the first part of August, they will actually have another budget meeting that I believe will be open to the public. So one of the good things that did come out from the last meeting is the sheriff has pushed back his deadline for implementing this. It's now no longer October 2023. It is now October 2024. But one of the things that the regional group would like to see is some funding in this fiscal year to help retain those employees in both dispatch and in the sheriff's deputies because they have several vacancies in both areas. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure the mayor could answer any questions as well. But I'm just bringing that to you as an update. There's no action to be taken on our part at this time. And I do not know of any additional meetings that are scheduled with the sheriff.
What were their intentions as far as filling their vacancies? Did they state anything, their efforts?
Not at that meeting, they did not.
I think that's the first thing they did, is solve their problems there. But they've got another year, I guess.
I mean, they did talk about the fact that some of our larger cities around us will pay $20,000 to $30,000 more for that position, and that, that is true. It's a difficult job to do, and it requires a very high stress level for those who are in it. And it's very important to our officers. But Mr. Clark did talk about the fact that we don't necessarily have the funding to participate at that level, but they would like to see additional money be made available for those positions. They did advocate a 7% raise last year for dispatchers. So I don't know what they will do in this coming budget year, but he did say they would give it serious consideration.
Is there a way that we can formally, as a council, pass a resolution or something to that effect, saying that we would support, we support the commission, we support the sheriff's department's request for additional funding and the need for additional funding, but that they look to the county for that?
So that's very much like your legislative platform. You can pass a resolution to that effect. There is a letter that's been circulated amongst the cities, the four cities that are participating in this conversation, that will either have a mayor or mayor pro temp signature or other council member, depending upon which way we want to go. It does state that exact thing that you're discussing. It also talks about some of the differences in the comparisons of the cities. For instance, you'll read in the article that there was some discussion about Grapevine and some of the other larger counties. Not a lot of those counties do the sales and use tax sharing that we do with Wise County. So that will also be a factor that we'll have to look at at some point. So as council, you can certainly draft that resolution and/or direct, I can draft one for you to review, and you can put that forward and present it to the Commissioners Court.
Was that half-cent sales tax, was it brought up at all?
It was by the mayor in Boyd. It was not discussed, but it was brought up in that meeting because it's a significant amount of money that we send on an annual basis based on that. But if it was retained here in Rome, would be a great benefit to our residents. Any other questions? So as we continue to meet or as more information becomes available, I will update council as we go along as to any progress. The sheriff did reiterate at the meeting on Monday that he was willing to negotiate based on a variety of things. I don't know if that will be successful or not based on some of the previous conversations, but it's certainly something to consider.
I got one question. Are we, where are we at with talking with the other cities as far as, I know another dispatch center, basically regionalizing? Speaking of, the Boyd mayor made a really good point because Grapevine kept being thrown around. And we don't have the tax base like Grapevine does or these other bigger cities. So for Grapevine to handle that cost, it wouldn't be a problem because they have all that tax base. But I think regionalizing would be a great idea. Not only for, I know with the sheriff, I didn't hear anything to talk about actually coming out and increasing our radio transmission, I guess, because I don't want to see another instance where the officer can't get out on the radio. Now, for regionalized, that would bring a lot more, I guess, less radio issues. So are we anywhere with those cities yet?
They're still discussing that, not only regionalization of potential dispatch services, but sharing of assets such as bulldozers or skid steers or things of that nature if public works departments need it. We. If public works departments need it, we, and the fact that I attend the meetings, but the mayors have discussed the fact that that would be beneficial for all the southern Wise County cities because we can't on our own all afford everything that we need. And so regionalization does make sense to a great extent. And at some point, it may just become a necessity for cities as a way of life, especially given the things that we're hearing at the legislative session that they may impose on us from Austin.
That was another big point, is if, you know, a pump goes out, is the sheriff's office going to provide that? But if we're regionalized with a lot of other cities, we have all those other resources we can hold.
Correct.
I know Chief Davis had been looking into that. Did he have an update for you or?
Not as of yet. The one thing that they did talk about recently was regionalization of any other services amongst the cities that might make sense. So it might be something to pursue as we go further into the budget season and/or into the next actual calendar year.
We need to work with the sheriff's office as much as we possibly can. And I don't like the idea of paying more money. We've got a lot of money that we put into our police department out of taxpayer money. And I don't like the idea of paying more money, but I do think that it would, it would be better for us if we try to negotiate and try to work it out with them.
What does everyone think about a resolution? Supporting them, supporting their needs, stating that we support the needs?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about their ability to even manage that dispatch office since they can't even staff it. I realize it's difficult to staff. But seven positions absent, well, it's pretty significant. I'm also concerned about dispatch performance based on hearsay from something that happened last week. And also, you know, when you look at it, museum's right next door to a big fire department. I guess that's Decatur's fire department. Sure burned down right next to the fire department anyway. That's just dispatch performance, that's what it is.
What are you, what burned down next to the fire?
Wise County History Museum.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So I guess there's, there's a couple of different, there's a couple of different issues. One issue is what are we going to do? The other issue is how can we, as a community that really right now has to rely on the sheriff's department and their dispatch system, how can we support them in seeking those additional funds? And the way that we as a council could do that would be to pass something saying that we understand and we see their need for more money so that they can fill and do, perhaps do better with their dispatching, but that we also support that they find those funds through the counties and not asking the municipalities for that.
So what exactly would that do, though?
Resolutions a lot of time come forward as a formal statement and can be received by the Commissioners Court as such. The letter can do some of the same things. It just depends on what you're wanting to say in them. And I will say, in the past several months, it's been difficult to get all parties to agree on one letter. If it's wholly contained within Rome, then you all can craft that to your satisfaction and have the mayor or someone sign it, and then we can send it to Judge Clark and he can keep that in his notes and in his conversations. It's just a formal show of support.
Without that, without, it's, you don't say something, say nothing, doesn't sound like we really support them. And I agree with the mayor that we ought to continue to keep in good graces with the sheriff's department.
But did that letter also do that?
The letter hasn't been sent.
Oh, it hasn't been sent?
No, ma'am. There hasn't been agreement on the letter.
I know I was at a meeting in Boyd along with a few other people that are in this room, and I heard that statement multiple times given to the sheriff. And he pretty much ignored the idea of going to the county commissioners and asking for money. That's what I observed, and so that's what's concerning to me. Even if we write the letter, it's going to be ignored.
I just, I'm, I'm more concerned about doing a resolution. I mean, I would like to do that, but that's a formal resolution that has to go through an attorney. It costs money, or no?
Not usually.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly have carbon review that, yes, we can.
He's like, yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's a whole lot different than recognizing someone formally when you recognize a staff member or something like that. You're just saying, this is your position. We're stating what our position is. Our position, I think we all agree, is that we don't have them funds to pay the $65,000. Not that they don't need it, but they may be, they need to bark up another tree in addition to this.
Well, their, their original funding source is from the county, which is why it's been the position of most of the cities in this area that you go back to the county for that, for said funding.
I think another good point was brought up. How much surplus did they have?
Several million dollars at the county level.
Here from the Boyd meeting, it was about $9 million total right now. So they, I mean, they can get those funds.
I didn't hear that. I thought it was closer to 3 million.
That was just recent. I believe there was some already in reserve, but I don't know the exact amount.
In a statement.
Judge Clark did say that, you know, they would be looking at reducing our tax rate, the county tax rate as well.
In a statement showing our position, I can agree with that, just having a record.
Yes, but at least we have until the next fiscal year, correct?
We do.
So, I mean, we have time to figure out.
My concern is what happens if they have seven positions out now, out of the 16 they have? What are they going to do to provide the service to us as customers and our officers right now? And to wait another 15 months doesn't seem like the best plan of action. I think either the county needs to allocate additional funds for this coming fiscal year or they need to figure out what else they can do to retain and recruit because you're not going to be able to get the job done well and you're going to pay quite a bit more in overtime and burnout issues that you'll have in an already highly stressful job. So I would like to see if, it would be my recommendation if council wants to make support, that we do that fairly quickly, so maybe that would carry some weight in the considerations for this fiscal year.
Especially as they're making their budgets now?
It just would be something to consider.
Yeah, I think drawing up a resolution would be a good idea.
Just to add my two cents to it, you can do this sort of two different ways. You could do a formal resolution, kind of like the proclamations you've done in the past. You could actually have the text of it prepared in advance and the city administrator, if you guys were to be in the meeting, you could pass that proclamation of resolution that night. Or you could do a resolution instructing the city administrator to prepare a letter and have her send the letter to whoever you wish, the county judge. Same thing, you could have an opportunity to have that letter sent to you before the council meeting and then you could prove it that night that this letter, you look at it, you prove it, you direct the city administrator to send the letter. So whichever way you feel like makes the most bang for the buck. And I don't have to review either. So it won't cost, it won't cost you anything to do that.
So which one do you all?
And just for a point of clarity before you debate, the, after the meeting on Monday, the, many of the mayors met outside and asked that we update the letter to include some additional information, and I just sent it back out to them yesterday for review.
So if there's a chance they all approve it, could that be that letter that we send or that resolution?
It could serve both purposes, yes.
Why don't we come up with a draft or a couple of us work on drafts? And maybe review the next meeting or something.
You can certainly do that.
Because we don't have time.
But not that much time.
I will remind you though, you'll have to, to come up with a draft and work through your city administrator because you guys are council members, you can't communicate between yourselves without violating the rules.
I'll, I'll take on a draft.
Thank you.
Okay. Number three, confirmation of public works director. Congratulations, Jesse. I got wind of it yesterday.
Thank you, Mayor. Jesse, if you would come up, we would like to recognize you. As, as most of council knows and several people in our community, it's been a long dry spell between public works directors and it's been almost a year since we had someone in that position. You've had city administrators or interims or myself serving in that role to the best of our ability, but that is a very specialized field. And I'm very, very pleased to announce that Jesse and I have had a conversation. He went through the entire formal process of the interview and was the unanimous selection of the panel who reviewed the candidates that were, had applied for the position, and he and I have discussed expectations and support role and what I can do, and he has agreed to accept said position. So we are now with the public works director upon confirmation of council.
Do you need a verbal aye around the room?
Yes, ma'am, I would need that.
We need to make a motion, make a motion to accept Jesse as the public works director.
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, Jesse. Not as if you haven't been around for a while. Okay. Number four, Encore Transmission Lines Update.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another item that, in light of the new council members that have been on, three of the five of you have not been a part of that conversation. The mayor has been included in some of these in the past. There will be meetings going forward from here. I was informed by the Justin city manager that Encore representatives had met with several cities and city managers closer to I-35 that didn't necessarily involve New Fairview or Justin or Rome, even though we are all affected by this. And so upon that notification, we did get updated maps, which you have before you. You will see them at your place. You will also see that I tried to indicate where the switch is because this extension of these electric lines will actually terminate within a property on RVR. So if you see on the left, there it says Ramhorn Hill Switch. It's a little white box. And then you will see I tried to notate what 114 is because the maps from Encore are a little bit difficult to read. The yellow dotted lines that are on this map are proposed transmission lines, so it could go anywhere at this point. I have been in contact with a Chris Riley with Encore as well as Elaine Priest. This was her previous world, when she was in the professional working world. And she's been a great asset to us to draw from and to understand some of the ins and outs that go on behind the scenes. And so it's my understanding that they submitted these proposed drafts to the PUC. Well, actually, they're going to submit them this coming week, is my understanding. And then at that point, we will get a narrower map to look at and we will have some additional points for input to them. I have also asked Mr. Riley to come to a future meeting so that he can update all of you in person and you can ask your questions directly to him. One of the things I think that people misunderstand when Encore and others come through is no one is ever going to be happy and we don't have the final say. What we can do is make recommendations and explain to them the reasons why and the financial impact that it will have on the city. But simply going in and saying we don't want it there is not going to be sufficient. So Mrs. Priest has done a very good job of talking with the three cities and with this council and myself about what to expect and how to navigate these waters. You may see that from where the Ramhorn Hill switch line is here, there is a dotted yellow line that goes out to 287 and then goes along towards the east in almost a straight line, which is in the southern part of RETJ. One of the things that we recommended as a council prior to this year's elections is that Encore stay along the highways as best as they could. The second alternative would be that easterly line that they now show noted on this map that was not on the original map. But at this point, it is simply an update for you all. The map you can keep or I can hang on to as we go through this process and as we attain more information, I will also bring this back to council for your review. Any questions I can answer for you?
My understanding was, one of these was going through the family park or something like that?
There was originally a conversation, not our family park by the railroad tracks. There was some conversation about a line that would go behind what was to be or is to be the Biwell Park. But I don't have any indication that that is the direction that they're going. Some of the issues is, that we've run across is if it comes across north through New Fairview and down the highway, that is the most advantageous for us, but it's difficult for them to attain. Some of the other city managers and cities along 35 have asked that it be pushed as far south as possible. And as you can imagine, I'm not really in favor of that to a great extent because it puts the burden on all of us in southern Wise County. So I, myself and Justin and New Fairview have been very clear with Mr. Riley what our preferences are and what council feedback has been thus far. And so we've been adamant that we have another, another bite at the apple or a chance to speak with them as it goes through. But again, it is a legislative process. It is governed by the PUC and others, and so all we can do is be a recommending body. I do think one thing that will save us is our topography. Because we do sit on this rise, I think that will actually work in our favor. Any other questions?
Number five, Texas Utility Payment Help.
Just briefly, Mayor, I would ask to table this until we have some additional information. Just to give you a brief overview of it, Texas Utility Payment would help low-income and struggling individuals with their utility bills. There is also another option through Wise Regional. It's called Unite Us. That is within our county as well. I'd like to explore both of those in depth, and I need to speak to our city attorney about any agreements that we would enter into to be a vendor or a participating person. It would not cost the city anything, but we do need to have all contracts or things of that nature reviewed prior to signing anything. So I would like to try and bring this back to the meeting on the 8th or the one on the 20th in June. We're not quite ready for it yet.
And I think you've got an executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
Section 551, point 071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation settlement offer or to seek advice from attorney regarding Walnut Creek Special Utility District.
And would all of you please turn your microphones off when you go into executive session? Thank you.
So it is 6:47. We'll convene into executive session at this time, or 6:48, I'm sorry. Just switched over.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is 7:05. We'll reconvene into regular session and action as a result of executive session.
Make a motion to approve the amendment for the Walnut Creek contract.
I'll say again.
Okay. And you said I could mention numbers, Mr. Atkins. Okay, all right. So all, all in favor? Okay.
Aye.
All right, now? Okay, the deal is with this amended contract, that it is, we're going to incur a cost of $150,000 and a portion of that, we are proposing that that be taken care of with Peter Pinkoff, with PMB out of the rolling B. So I think there will be a final decision with Walnut Creek made tomorrow. And at this point, we do have the contract approved. Or the contract amendment, I'm sorry. All right, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It was my second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, so we are out of here at 7:06.